Double input, Jonathan. John Aaron. Okay, there's a meeting in the studio, John.
Uh, yes, under item number eleven, executive session. We'd like to have an executive session to discuss, um, purchase of real estate.
All right. Um, okay, under Mayor's report, um, we are down to, you know, how many days? I think it was ten to eighteen days, something like that, until St. Louis Fest. Still starting to hear from people saying, what do you mean we have to build a float? What do you mean we're on some committee that nobody told us about? And surprise, you are. And, um, but anyway, it's a part of how this community gets ready for this festival that we only do every two years. So, um, and what people can do, and all the people sitting here on this council, and, um, is look at your neighbors, and if you can help them clean up their properties a little bit, um, offer to lend a hand. And, um, just cleaning up and cleaning up, that's what we've been talking a lot about. And it does make such a difference in our reputation as about we are a very pretty little town. So, just as another reminder. Um, also, this is not for, um, admonishing anybody, but in Linsburg, for a very long time, lighting our Christmas lights, whether it's in the park, on the bridge, downtown in the trees, has been this rather nebulous kind of thing where no one's really in charge. It just kind of happens. And, um, we've had a few changes this year, and no one is in charge. Surprise. And so here we are, getting closer to thinking about decorating for Christmas, and as a community, people say, well, the city should do it. And the city has never done it. The lights that we currently have have been purchased by donations from the community and businesses, and, um, they, right now, they have been coordinated kind of out and add off. Right now, there is no one. So, Linsburg talks a lot about Christmas and how important it is, and so we have to be thinking about that. How are we, how are we going to do that? So I'm putting it all out there for the entire community and saying, if you care about this, think about stripping off. All right. All my preaching for tonight. And, um, uh, Roxy, do you want, uh, motion for the consent agenda to be approved?
So.
Second.
Second.
In the second, Roxy.
Ed.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Kirsten.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes.
Emo.
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. Um, are there any appointments?
No appointments.
All right, uh, report for planning and zoning?
Nothing in to report.
All right, any whole business?
No business.
And, okay, who is the Main Street repave?
Good evening. Uh, during the North Main repave project, um, a couple of areas that were, uh, soft spots in the, the base area, this upgrade, were discovered. One of those was anticipated just from the outs, uh, the surface of the concrete or the asphalt before it was tore apart, so we kind of anticipated that. But a couple of the other areas were not really, uh, anticipated, so, uh, they had to do some extra work to remove, uh, the subgrade and get down to a solid area. And this took quite a bit of extra material. It took a lot of work to remove the material, and then a lot of extra work to, uh, put in that much extra material to get that solid base built up. So, uh, we ended up with about two hundred and fifty-two extra tons of crushed concrete to get that, um, base built back up. This project did have an overrun, uh, some additional crushed concrete, uh, that was not charged to us, but this that is charged is actually part of, uh, the soft areas that had to be repaired. So we're just looking for a motion to, uh, a motion to approve the overrun cost for crushed concrete for the North Main Street repave project to APAC for the amount of seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty cents.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Ted.
Second.
Any discussion?
What happens on something like this, or council doesn't approve it?
Guess it comes out of my paycheck. That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that question.
We don't pay it, and then the vendor takes whatever action they need necessary. Get it, Bill?
Yes. Yeah. I mean, if it's something that they could prove theoretically, you're looking at a lawsuit.
Okay. I was just, I mean, we've done this before, and I was just curious as to what happened if we did both, no? And in this case, this is really something unforeseen that hasn't been predicted, and it wasn't anything that we asked them, and maybe they left out or something like that.
Yeah, no, this is just totally.
Unforeseen situation.
Yeah, totally unforeseen because of conditions of the road. I mean, it happens, um, regularly. Sometimes you can anticipate that, um, and they can maybe, maybe try and add some to the bid when they, when they look at the project, but it's just totally unforeseen. I mean, it's road construction.
And the road is great as a drive there to see my home, and it's fantastic. I have thoughts of the city every time I go to North Main.
Any further discussion? Roxy.
Emo.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Kirsten.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Ed.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, the next item is, uh, two, two separate motions, actually. The first one is for, um, additional water meters. Uh, as we've gone through the water meter replacement program for the last number of years, we've always had a very substantial number of water meters on inventory. That has kind of gotten lower as we've moved along and got those replaced. And also now, as we've started to look at Stockholm Estates and the buildout up there, this is not necessarily a normal anticipated buildout of a development because it's really rapidly, uh, expanding. So we are going to need quite a few additional water meters to have on hand as that builds out. The problem is right now with electronic, anything that has electronics in it, they're very hard to come by. So, we were able to locate, um, twenty-three meters down at Corin Main that they had on hand, and then our sales representative actually was able to find eight more for us right off the top. So, um, we have those, we've had them delivered, so we have them, because we don't know when we can get other ones, the additional, or the lead times, eight to twelve weeks right now on water meters, and we're going to need these here pretty quick. So, we went ahead and had them delivered, uh, and we're just asking for a motion to approve the invoices from Corin Main for seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars, uh, for the purchase of the water meters and the cables that go along with them. That's the first one.
Do you want to do these separately?
Let's do them separately.
All right. Do you want her motion, and this is Corin Main?
Corin Main.
Corin Main. Seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Do you want her motion to that?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Ted. Any discussion? Carry on.
Rick.
Yes.
Kirsten.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Ed.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
The second item is for, uh, an order of forty-eight ERTs. ERTs are the radio transmitters that we've talked about a number of times that relay the, uh, information from the water meters to the, uh, collection system for meter reading. We have not, uh, done anything with that. We've got a quote from them, um, for an order of forty-eight, so we're just looking for a motion to approve the quote from Detten Leisong for five thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents for the purchase of forty-eight ERTs.
Motion motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved in second, Ted. Any discussion?
So are these also anticipated for the, the buildout area?
Yes, they will, they will help to cover that for, um, quite a while. I bet should get us through at least half of that.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Kirsten.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes.
Emo.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Ed.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, next item, American Swedish Tennis Town. All right, Ed.
All right, uh, good evening, everyone. So, American Swedish Tennis Town, if you're not familiar, is a community-led initiative and project, um, to, uh, revamp and, um, commemorate and celebrate the history of tennis in Linsburg, um, by basically changing the face of the, of the existing tennis court at Swenson Park. So, the idea from the committee, um, from the citizen committee, is to, uh, do, uh, basically a, a fun court redesign with a new dollar horse, as well as some historical commemoration of some of the tennis feats in town, uh, that have happened over the years, uh, at the high school level and also, uh, at Bethany, um, so.
Bethany College has new, new courts, beautiful. The high school has wonderful courts. And, um, and then the, uh, Riverside Courts are now pickleball courts. So this was the lonely court. It was kind of looking kind of sad. And so the idea was, um, and it started with Bryce Young, who some of you might know him, some might not. Bryce had conversations with people in Linsburg. Bryce doesn't live in Linsburg any longer. But Ron and Sue Dahlstein, um, Mr. Tennis of Linsburg, um, he, they really think that this is a good thing for us to instruct, um, people in our community and visitors of the importance of tennis in a little town like this. And I'm going to use Jordan as an example, having grown up in Salina, so he's in this meeting, and we were talking about how we want people to understand about why tennis was important. And Jordan said, I didn't have any idea that tennis was a big deal in Linsburg. So, um, Bryce has done a lot of research. If you look at Emery Lindquist books and that kind of thing, there's, there's a lot of information about this. But what we have focused on about this court is this is a place for families and individuals. You don't want to take your game out on the big deal courts and play in front of everybody and embarrass yourself. Well, you can go hide over in, in Swenson Park. And, um, but to, to, um, upgrade that area, um, there are six, seven people on this committee, that are, um, have been meeting, and, and so what is going to happen, uh, hopefully, is that at Hillman's Fest Saturday following the parade, there will be just this announcement that this is going to be happening. It's not going to be fully fleshed out, and this will be, um, whatever improvements, the dollar horse and things like that will be paid for in private money, so it's on city dollars that are going to, to support this. And, but as we did the, um, Elma Swenson Memorial Garden, which is now like three years ago, or something like that, this body, um, said yes to the, um, uh, community development and parks, go forth and do good things. And so that's the blessing that we are asking here tonight from this, from this council, is to tell this committee of people, go forth and do good things, and make it the, uh, Linsburg American Swedish Tennis Town. Anything else, more that you'd like to say?
No, that's great.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to say that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussions? Does anybody have any questions? Is, is there any sense of what the, the total budget would be for this project?
Yeah. There's not a sense, but the, the committee does know. The committee does know that this is not in the capital improvement plan. Uh, there is not a budget for this, uh, from the city, and that would be privately raised.
Right. I, I, and I, and I certainly have no feelings strongly, won't win out of it, but I do, but, but this idea of even prioritizing some of our community grant funds is something that is interesting to me, and I'm not saying I would prioritize or de-prioritize this project, but I think that's something that we should potentially be prepared to get our heads around a little bit moving forward with this type of proposal, because even though it's not city funds, it's not responsible for us to endorse every, again, I'm not saying that's a problem right now, but.
And the only reason that this body is even named, it's city property.
Right.
It's not, it's not, you know, something, something else. It's, it's on city property, so whatever happens on city property, um, is under disapproval of, uh, this group, and certainly all the various departments, you know, you can't do that, or you can't do that. That's the reason.
Yeah. But it's used often. I mean, I drive the car every day on the way home from work, and, I mean, on my way to work at six-thirty, nobody's playing, but. On my way home, I'm bored.
Yeah.
The designs that were given to us, are those that are chosen, or what are these?
I believe that the horse, the dollar horse design was chosen in the last meeting. The other two designs, one is a proposed, I think it's a backboard, so people can play by themselves if they don't have a partner. And then the court design isn't finalized, but I believe the idea is to do some kind of checkerboard, Swedish checkerboard pattern. And this goes back to, uh, what the mayor said, which is changing this into more of a family recreational court as opposed to a serious competition space. So in that way, it would add, uh, you know, another wrinkle in the recreational offering to Linsburg Cass. So there's the pickleball, there's, you know, the nice courts at, at the, at the college, and then there's this family recreational space.
Well, the backboard, they took that all down at the college, and they, they used to have thirty places that you could play at the college.
Oh, the, 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 those were handball courts?
Yeah. Yeah. And you could head to the ballons too.
One of this, and the thing about the dollar horse also, this will be in the herd of dollar horses that we have. But as people would come over and, and say they want to take their picture with the dollar horse, which is what everybody does, there will be history. Uh, there will be a big sign that says the history, and then probably doing a Q or something there, that you can read further on, so on the city website, talking about tennis in, in Linsburg and why, why tennis. And, um, some of the historical things that have happened, um, that you all know, that the Swedish ambassador, Walkmeister, I think was his name, he, when he was here at Hillman's Fest, he played tennis. He, that was one of the things that he wanted to do, so some people played tennis with him. A little bit of trivia. So, um, anyway, but there is a very rich history. Um, there's a reason why, um, we're talking about this. So, um, it fits into, um, recreation, I guess, but it fits in, um, even more so to tourism and historical context.
Well, and having that, honestly, I mean, the Swenson Park is amazing, with the way the van shell looks now and all of the different projects, it's, it's really exciting.
Yes, I think it is too. So, okay.
Just have to vote.
We just have to vote, correct? We're, it's, we got a motion. Yeah, okay. All those in favor of, of, um, the American Swedish Tennis Town project, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much. Stay tuned. And we'll do some more. Hello.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the last meeting, City Council approved, uh, premium pay payments for public safety employees. And as we were finalizing those, uh, it came to my attention that I had omitted the Capers, the Kansas Public Employers Retirement System, uh, the city's portion of those payments. And that is an additional two thousand, ninety-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. And in order for that to be paid out of the ARPA funds, I wanted to bring it before Council.
So the motion is to approve that?
The motion is to approve COVID premium pay for public safety personnel in the amount of two thousand, ninety-eight dollars and eighty-two cents for the Capers match.
Are you in motion?
So moved.
Moved in second, Ted. Any discussion? Hearing that, Roxy.
Ed.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Kirsten.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Next item, Sprout House Project update.
Yes, uh, and there's no action to be taken here. I, I, I just wanted to make sure that Council had an update, and, and I know that there's, you know, folks who, who follow our meetings, even if they don't come in person. As everybody in this room knows, uh, the city has been supporting, uh, Sprout House in the development of, of a new building, uh, since the spring of 2019. And I've been doing that as an economic development initiative. Following your approval of the industrial revenue bonds, which are, um, involve city action, but they are privately funded, the, uh, ground was broken, and if you've been out that way, there are walls up, and I understand that the roof trusses were either delivered today or, or being delivered this week, so buildings flying up. And we're looking at being in it not later than July first.
Wow.
Um, the, the building's about ninety percent fundraised. One important tool for closing that final ten percent is community service tax credits. So staff, city staff, uh, applied for, and the project was awarded two hundred thousand dollars in tax credits in July by the Department of Commerce. This is a seventy percent refundable tax credit, and so I've, I've got an example for you. If a donor, um, gave ten thousand dollars under that program, so it's, it's a very specific process, and, and you'd want to engage with me on that, but if, uh, a donor gave ten thousand dollars, that generates a seven thousand dollar tax credit, uh, and a three thousand dollar charitable gift, essentially, and that, uh, counts on, on the donor's federal taxes, that three thousand dollars. Seven thousand dollars, if the donor's tax liability is only a dollar in the state of Kansas, they get a check back from the state for six thousand, nine hundred, ninety-nine dollars. And so it's a great tool, uh, to hopefully, um, allow some folks to amplify their gift, you know, where, where a, a three thousand dollar gift would have been a large gift for them, they could actually give ten thousand dollars now. Uh, or, you know, a five hundred dollar gift will generate, uh, one thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the project, uh, if they, if they give it under this, um, under the community service tax credit, uh, program. And anybody interested in, in making a donation in that way should contact me. Anybody with questions about the project or interest generally in the project should reach out to me as well. Uh, the website is www.chowcareforlinsburg.org. Thank you.
So thank you.
Yeah.
Have you been in contact with all of our local CPAs, something out of this?
I believe so, yes. I've, I've made an effort to, yes.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Next item, executive session.
Mayor, I move to going to executive session to discuss the acquisition of real estate exception pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B six for fifteen minutes, and to include the city administrator and the city attorney. The open meeting will resume to the city council chamber at, what time is that, eight? Ten? Seven, ten.
There you go, thanks.
Seven, ten P M.
One more second. Oh, thank you. Do you want your second to?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Huh? All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position, and we are on time, on schedule. So, any other, anybody have any questions about the search? Okay. Any other others? No? All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And aye very quickly.
He's needed.
All right. Um, any other others? I sent out an email that Cassie did to Council about the city administrative search and where things are going, and I heard back from one person about the profile, and it was duly noted, and so the profile is out there. And so just keep telling everyone that you know that might be interested in this position,